The Island Ice calculation or no?
Yeah.
I had a little.
It is 6:34 PM, the 24th of August 2017, and this is the Northwood Park and Recreation District Commission, Board of Commissioners meeting at the Oak Harbor School District Boardroom. Regular meeting. In attendance are Commissioner Frasch, Commissioner Shinkleton, Commissioner Hawley, and Commissioner Fort. Agenda changes. I have a question for you, Commissioner Fort.
Yes, ma'am.
The meeting location, which is unfinished business, you wanted to talk about it.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, who is, I don't remember where he told me he was going, doesn't matter.
No.
He's not here. He wanted to be here for the discussion on it, so if you don't mind, we can delay it or we'll have the discussion. It's up to you. Completely up to you.
Yeah, I'd sort of like to get this thing done, but I hate paying for this place.
I know.
When would that be done?
It'll be done at the next regular meeting.
Which wouldn't be till September?
Corrected when due.
So it'll probably end up being 2/2, so we might as well wait.
Alrighty. Okay, so we will table the meeting location to next month. Alright. Commissioner Frasch, did you have any changes to the agenda?
No, I actually like that idea of moving it back to the pool.
We're not talking about it right now, thank you.
Yeah, I know.
Did you want a change, meeting, any agenda changes?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Shinkleton?
No.
Did you have any other changes?
No.
Okay. Did you have a public comment? Do we have?
There are no public comments.
There are no public comments. Board issues. Anyone have any board issues?
You're missing like a lot. No, thank you.
Alright, no board issues. Lively crowd. Okay, so the August 25 minutes were available not over the weekend, they were available earlier. Did people, did anyone, did everyone have a chance to read the August 25 minutes or should we just wait until next time?
I've read them.
Okay.
I've read them.
And I just read through them myself. Okay, does someone have a motion then on the August 25?
I make a motion, alright, move, approve August 25, 2016, regular meeting minutes as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, sorry, since I have to write, seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the 25 August regular meeting minutes as approved. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And Chair votes aye unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Yes, approval. Alright, voucher review. Any, do I have a motion on the vouchers?
I move, we approve expense vouchers 7653 through 7690 in the amount of $21,727.95 and payroll transfer in the amount of $47,282.34 for a total of $69,010.29.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the expense vouchers, and I'll repeat it all when we get to that, but do we have discussion on the vouchers? What's the Aqua Pearl box, 12-pound box?
Those are chemicals that go in the filter.
Oh, it sounded like something for mermaids, but...
Yeah, no.
Let's see, I think it's, yeah. So, question about, so do you, do you just get paid for your own phone or you just reimburse your $40 a month? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
How much it's gonna cost a little bit?
Yeah.
Thanks. It's a good deal for us, huh?
Yeah, that's a good deal for me, it's.
Yeah, I bet.
$40 I get once a month.
Yeah, but I'm sure you pay more.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, you know, belts and muscles and stuff, yeah.
Pay a lot more.
Yeah, thanks.
There was the patron refund of $463, was that for like a annual pass or, that seems like a lot of money to be refunded.
That was an annual pass, yes.
And the reason given was?
Um, oh god, gotta remember this one. I'm gonna probably confuse it, there was one that moved, bought it and then decided to move, and I think that's the one, I can verify that reason for it, but I'm confusing, I might be confusing that one with another, with another one there, but there were, that was one of them when they got it, or I'm leaving.
Without having used any of it?
Without, yeah, they basically purchased it and then like a week later, I'm moving, can I get a reimbursement for it?
Okay, that makes sense.
However, I'm sure they paid for it by management, it's just your paycheck, back to the old MasterCard thing.
I, I, I...
I'm sure we lost money on that because of MasterCard.
Yeah, but there's a lot of things that if people couldn't use MasterCard, they wouldn't, but, well, that's a discussion for another time. The daddy-daughter dance, I saw that we had the room rent for it, so when was, when was that?
That was, um, right around, that was Father's Day weekend.
Okay, have we seen the?
Not, not yet, because Julie hasn't given that to me and I've asked her for that, but I know what you're asking for and, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just for a little clarity, the walmart.com is listed as advertising.
Mm-hmm.
What exactly does that mean?
That was for the Halloween happening booth, that was some pictures that were blown up to put in the booth.
Super. And then the goggles and cats, those are retail items?
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I do have none.
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, that expense vouchers 7653 through 7690 in the amount of $21,727.95 and the payroll transfer of $47,282.34 for a total of $69,010.29 be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye, approved unanimously. Okay, committee reports. Plumb Valley?
There's no report for this one.
Okay. And no report for program review, and I took the Levy Committee off because all the members are like, we resigned, so, and I wanted to ask the other board members if you were interested in being on Levy Committee at all, and if you're not, that's okay.
Well, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, previously, meaning you weren't at, expressed interest and so did Commissioner Shinkleton.
To a certain extent, yeah. I mean, I, I, it's different from, well, I think that's where we need to clarify what that actually means in relative to what y'all did, and I'm not sure, absolutely, however, I think we just want to be clear, I think one of the things we need to do is get clear on what those roles and responsibilities are a little bit differently from, from how it existed for over a year, and, and so, because I think it, I think the point, part of the point that you were trying to make, Commissioner Hawley, is that
Yes.
there was a certain expectation and, and you actually feel like that was fulfilled.
Yes.
And, and therefore the torch needed to be passed, or, I mean, I think I tried to express something to that sentiment last time, and, and that's, so I think there's, I would, I would say in its, in its pre-existing condition, it, right, it's, yeah, it's, it's a...
We, we don't have to have a Levy Committee, I just wanted to open it up in case anybody else, yes, Commissioner Fort?
So, I have a question. One, I have an idea that maybe we could put something at the front desk, you know, say, pick up your yard, uh...
Yes.
Signs here, and you could sign them out and sign them back in or whatever, and, you know, that way we get, the pool users leaving could say, oh yeah, I'll stick one in my yard.
And, and the answer to Commissioner Shinkleton's very good question is, can we do that? The answer is, as long as we give equal time to anybody who wants to work against the Levy, and the answer is absolutely, we could put up signs, say, pick up your anti-Levy signs here too, as long as they provided them. That's, that's what you have to do, you have to provide equal time, and...
Because we don't have to pay for their anti?
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
But if we're providing a forum for people to pick something up, it needs to be whatever, however, yeah.
Sure, exactly, if they have a, if they have an anti-pool committee, then they want to provide that, so that, that can be done too.
Yes.
I can imagine that happening.
Um, anyway, so, okay, so, I would just like to follow up with you, since I know, so if you're, sorry, I know you kind of, I'd like to follow up with you individually just to understand a little bit better, I know, I know you've become very familiar with what the rules are, and I think it makes more sense than doing it in this forum of understanding what they are, because you understand them and that doesn't mean that I do. Okay. And, and so, if we could do that offline to understand a little bit better, because I think, I think there, one of the things that I struggle with is what really belongs in this forum versus what belongs elsewhere, and, and that's part of what I struggle with, and I'd like to understand better what the rules are to ensure that if there are updates or, or asks or anything that we can do in this forum, that we do it, but that we're not doing something that we shouldn't be doing. Very good point. So, is that, is that fair? Yes. Follow up with you offline? Yes. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So, moving on, action item review, Mr. Director.
So, one is complete, on the P and L now, the security fees, the annual fee and the service calls are broken out individually.
Absolutely.
The other, what's that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And the other one, which is the liability insurance cover options, I don't have any other options, but what Jeff did tell me was that, there are only two companies that cover people like us around here, we only really have two options, one was our previous one, Endurus, and one is CIAW. So, he is asking Endurus if they will consider, would they cover us again and what it would be, and he's also talking to CIAW, is there any way you can work your rate then, so, but those really are only two options, so it's not completed yet, but that's the status update on that action item.
Okay.
That's it for the action items.
Okay, unfinished business. We need to set a date for the Executive Director Performance Evaluation, and it was, you know, it's August, it's the end of August, we should have done it sometime this month, but we've put off setting the date like for two months, so...
Well, isn't, isn't the Madam Chair, sorry?
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't part of the input is, and I'm not, so we need to get input from you, correct? We need to get your inputs.
I can provide it.
Okay, okay, so you're ready for that part?
When, when can you get that to us?
About by the end of next week.
End of next week is good, so by 1 September?
Is that the date? Okay.
Yeah, that's Friday. Alright, so Close of Business, 1 September.
That's what he's gonna tell us?
He's gonna give us in writing his inputs for his performance review. Inputs from Director to Commissioners. Okay, how long do you guys need, do you think, to take his inputs and do the, and I will send you the thing that we put together, which was the, after last year, the form and also the one that showed this is his goals for this year.
Okay.
So I will send that to everybody electronically, I'm pretty sure I have it electronically. I will send that to you also by the end of next week. So, with all that paperwork, how long does he, do you think you need to write a performance review, looking at what you have going on in your personal lives as well? A week, two weeks?
I say next meeting, regular meeting, should be fine.
We, if we want to discuss it, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry, I'll let you go, sorry.
Um, 'cause usually what, what happens is, you do what we did last year and it worked really well, is you fill it out and you send your input to me and I put them together for the, and then we could do that at the regular meeting where it's all together and then we look at it and say, yep, this is what we think, but, so you, if we, we can't keep delaying it, so I would say if, if you have everything by the 1st of September and you get it to me by your, your input of the 15th of September and our meeting's on the 28th, I can get it all together by the meeting on the 28th, and actually I'll get it done probably by the 22nd and send it to you all, so you can look at, here's the combined thing, so everyone can look at it and we can in fact talk about it at the meeting on the 28th. Does that seem, yes?
So, it would be the, the, yeah, it's my, trying to talk here for the first time. So we would do the debrief on the, at that regular meeting or?
Yes, we'll go into executive session.
Okay.
And that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So that we would provide the inputs by the 15th of September?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that, is anyone not able to do that?
Sorry, I have a question. Do you get, does he get to see those before his debrief?
Yes.
So that he can respond or not?
Yeah, that's, he gets to look at it too, as well as everybody else.
Okay.
So that, that way he can, you know, that's the way we did last year, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does anyone have issue with having two weeks to do it, to put it together from the time you get all the information? Is that okay? So you will get your, your part to me no later than Close of Business or, you know, end of the day on the 15th, and just send it to me on the, our regular email, pool email, and then I will take a week and combine it and get it back to everybody by...
Send it directly to you and not to the, uh...
Yes, send it directly to me, not to everybody else, just me, and then I will send it out to you
Okay.
on the 22nd, so you can look at it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Does that, alright.
Thank you.
I'll write this down, so I don't have to... Get it out. 22nd, discuss, movie, 28. Okay. Island Ice Proposal. So we've been talking about this...
The Director has a question. No, I'm, I'm, I'm just waiting.
And we've been discussing it for a couple of meetings, does anyone have questions that they want to ask the Director? And if no one has questions, does somebody want to make a motion?
No, exactly. You asked me to find out some information from...
Oh, okay, then why don't you tell us what you found out?
Yeah, so, the attendance last year for six days, so they ran it five hours a day for, well, on New Year's Eve they went till 9 o'clock to coincide with the fireworks, but they sold 1,423 tickets. They had about 400, well, not about, 428 of them were pre-sales when they did the blitz to go, here, we're gonna have this thing here and come get your tickets at a reduced price early, and they sold 995 regular price tickets, so...
How many were 95?
428 advanced and 995 at the gate, so if they were, although it didn't go evenly, because they didn't get many people on the 31st, because it was blowing sideways sleep, or New Year's Eve, but if you divide that, it's 1,423 by 6, that's about 237 skaters a day, what it would average to in a five-hour period each day.
Yeah. My apologies if I missed something, but I think one of the things when I did, I missed the last meeting unintentionally, but one of the things that I was unsure of and I have not seen unless I've overlooked it is the insurance component.
$210 for, and it was just, it was added into the, the stuff in there, but it was, and it's $210, that's it like for the whole five weeks, it's not per month, it's not per week?
That's what it would, that's what, how they would insure a 30-foot by 60-foot rake.
Okay.
With an additional $210 to our existing premium.
Thank you.
So, but you didn't increase, you didn't, you didn't add that sort of half hour before and after?
That's, that's, yes, that's in there.
That's that figures with all the numbers in it that it gave us.
It's a sheet here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And down at the...
It still says 168, I thought that was.
No, it says 210 though.
Oh, okay, for the next day.
Yeah. Sorry. Chipped off, one second.
Well, you have total labor costs, okay.
So the, 200 and something per day, five hours, how many per day, sorry?
How many hours a day?
Yeah, five hours.
Well, six hours.
Six hours.
My plan would be to run it from 2 o'clock to 8 o'clock.
And it was 220 per day was the average?
237 per day, so that would, what that closely equates to is the, is the 60 average number of skaters per block, but, no, I don't know that, I, certainly that would, we would hope to get something like that, but...
So daily labor projections for 2018 takes into account the half hour, but 2017 did not.
The numbers...
There's, there's no...
Yeah.
There's no two-hour thing in there at the beginning.
Well, the numbers at the bottom, the last two little graphs at the bottom, those are the numbers.
Okay.
That, they are correct, but you're right, I...
And that does take in, that does, that does correct the 2017.
Yeah.
Anyway, I mean, it's not that much, but it's just...
And how badly scored, scarred up do these surfaces get?
Well, that depends on how they're cared for according to the, to the manufacturers, but there are coat, you can put a coating of stuff down, if you keep the skates in good condition with the sharpeners and all, that they don't typically...
Spray, spray on it.
Yeah, that, well, yeah, some have spray and some have...
And it depends upon, that's why they have a different cost, because it depends upon the quality of material you buy.
Yeah. But if you take care of them, it should be minimal, it shouldn't be like every year you, you might lose one panel a year, but...
So we'd be responsible for the replacement cost?
Well, not necessarily, the idea would be that every year we find a bunch of sponsors, like a premium, a premier sponsor, and, and those donations would be able to pay for any replacements that we had to have or costs associated with getting it set up, because who knows, we're gonna get the same deal from everyone around the city.
Right now, playing is still for 100% of the upfront costs to be paid for by this...
That's our goal, that's our goal, yes.
I would be averse to anything that wasn't like, not just a goal, it's like, that's the requirement.
Well, if we can't raise it, then we'll just, not, not purchase, we won't go forward.
Okay.
From what I understand, it's a no-loss situation on our part, it's just if they meet it, we're just agreeing with them to pursue the option, and then if everything falls in place, like everything is paid for, then we go over and we'll make profit, but if everything doesn't fall, all in place, then we can get out of it without no cost to us.
That's what, that's my understanding of what we're being told.
That there is no, I don't see there's no risk in it for us to approve this, to even look at it, and we can always back out at the, at the last minute.
Well, I would, I would go for the understanding that we're trying to back out if...
If we don't play this stuff.
Yeah.
Here's my, here's my concern about the whole thing, is that there's always some cost that we don't anticipate. We have no money, we, and it's taxpayers' money that we're gambling with, it's like, I just, I'm very, very concerned about this, I don't, I feel like we're kind of getting rushed, we are getting rushed, I, I am so concerned, something is gonna come down the pipe that we were not anticipating and it was like, oh, you know, you've already signed and committed and you've got this stuff and now there's this extra expense that we can't afford.
What, what taxpayer money are we risking on this? This would be all donated money by the local businesses to make the purchase and then...
That's what I'm telling you, is if something unexpected that was not thought about, whatever, if it comes up, it's like, oh...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, all of our staff time, we were expecting donations for that as well?
No.
No, I'm...
So that's, so that is a risk.
I'm talking about upfront...
I know.
...the body equipment, everything else, other than, other than the staff time to operate it, and he's showing that the staff time should be more than balanced by income, though there's, I still have a question about 10 weeks, and again, I would say that we should be able to shut it down if there's a lack of enthusiasm.
Exactly, we could.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I, Commissioner Fort, you, you were not here, but I'm sure, I know that you'll listen to the meeting, but Commissioner Fort said something last time that resonated with me about sharing the risk, it was, it's not a, it's not a, an incredibly novel idea, but on the other hand, it was I had, you know, as we were being presented, it, I've actually thought about it ever since he said it, because the thing that I would say about this is it's been done once, which I would, I would actually say that that isn't a proven concept, it doesn't mean that I think that it's a bad idea, but I think we have to, for, for me personally, the thing that I look at is the relative risk, and, and I believe that there is some, you might disagree with me, but I believe that there is some for many reasons, one is financial and the other one is the reputation of the district, and, and I think we're both, and I think you would agree with both of those things, and I think you're trying to promote them and I'm trying to ensure them, and, and I'm not saying that you're not trying to do the same thing, the thing is, is I think, and this, again, was the point that as I was running out the door last time, that I've thought about it ever since, which was, the thing, the, the only thing that I feel like I could, I could genuinely support is something where there is a shared responsibility, such that it's the, well, why don't we take it over next year, is, is I think exactly kind of what you said, but it's the, can, can we move toward this as opposed to owning it, because, I mean, I, I want us to grow our programs and I want us to diversify, but I also want us to grow our wheelhouse and not get it in over our heads, and that, and that is not a statement about you personally, Executive Director, it is not, it's just I have, I have concerns that I feel like, to Commissioner Hawley's point, it feels very, so what are we gonna do, and, and I, that might not be the intention, but it feels very, if I have to choose towards something that I feel has a lot of risk, then I'm probably gonna play it safe, and I don't want to miss out on a good opportunity, but I'm concerned about it, for the good of the district, if, if that, sorry, I know that was a diatribe and I didn't mean it to be, I just, I've been thinking about that ever since Commissioner Fort said it at the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so we still, we actually don't have a motion on the table. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we carry on with looking into this Island Ice for making, making decision, have the Executive Director actually work on it to see if it's feasible like last year, I, I think, personally, I think it will work because last year...
Okay, no, sorry, you have to finish with the motion, what is your motion exactly?
I want to carry forward with this Island Ice, make it part of the district.
Do you want to put any provisions on that?
Is there any suggestions, provisions?
Yeah, I, I...
Like making sure the money is all there?
Yeah, see, I would want to, I would want to have the, in the, in the proposal, in the, to, that we...
As long as it's a hundred percent.
I was trying to think about the wording, because I want to make sure that it's fully understood that we will not, we accept it on the condition that 100% of the upfront costs to start this thing up and have the thing set up and going would be, come from donations and not from the, any of the pools funds.
Okay, so right now the motion is to carry forward with the Island Ice...
And if we do get that, we won't, we won't accept it.
Order please.
Yeah.
Again, I'm just trying.
I know.
Okay, the motion is to carry forward with the Island Ice proposal to make it part of the district.
And to proceed as long as 100% of the upfront cost is provided by the donations.
100% upfront, costs, costs.
Maybe only if 100%.
Wait.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion is to carry forward with Island Ice proposal to make part of the district, to make it part of the dis, make it part of the district and to proceed as long as 100% of the upfront costs are provided by donations. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
So now a discussion? New first of discussion?
So how, yeah, so let's, let's talk about how this, how this gonna occur. So you're, you're gonna get this approval, and now you're gonna go out and get, and try and get all those contributions in writing, in, in hand? I mean, will we have this money in hand before we actually commit to this? Or will we have people saying, oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do that, and then, but when, when push comes to shove, they say, ah, we decided we don't want to. So what kind of commitment are we going to have?
Well, it would be a commitment to have the money, or, or, or guarantee of the money by a bias.
But it's gonna be by word only, nothing legal?
Well, money by a certain date, which if, if someone wants to back out, and we don't get enough money to do it, then we, everyone gets their money back.
I think what the Executive Director is, is saying that is, by the certain date, the cutoff date, if we don't get all the money that was promised by these businesses, then everybody, then it's gonna, we're gonna back out, and everybody that donated money is gonna get their money back. That's if they don't meet that date.
And this would be before we...
Yes.
Buy and commit to buying all this.
Correct, correct.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Singleton? Um, do we know what that date is? I'm just trying to follow.
Yeah, do you, do you know what date is the drop dead date for getting this stuff?
To order it?
Well, only one of them has responded to my question of how long it takes to get it, and then they think it's about two weeks. So, having a calendar in front of me, I would say that, to start this thing around Thanksgiving, I would say probably by...
Thanksgiving's the 23rd this year, so if it takes two weeks, I would say people need to commit their money no later than, and actually give it to you in hand no later than the 1st of November.
I might go back even earlier than that.
Madam Chair, yes, I, I think we have to, there are two, there are two components to this, and there are probably more than I'm not thinking of. One of them is a fulfillment exercise on the part of a supplier. The other one is a marketing exercise that needs to happen. Um, so in other words, we, we, it would not be in our best interest to November 1st say, hey, guess what? Surprise, we're doing this thing. Um, and so I, and, and those are things that we, I, I think we can probably all agree that none of us are experts at. Um, myself, probably less. I mean, I, I can say absolutely I'm not. Um, we, we know that the chamber has a much better handle on that sort of thing, and we know that we're working in partnership. I just, I, I feel like that's just important for us to not just back it up two weeks to that point.
Very good point.
Yeah, so it's probably, sorry, go ahead.
I would suggest October 20th, it's about, it's almost, it's about, probably about four weeks prior. If we don't have it ready to go then, then we don't go.
Um, let me raise another point also, that, you know, just remember, November 7th, we're gonna have a levy going out, and so we're, we're going out and asking all the people in the district to support the levy, and then we're also going out to the businesses in O'Carver and saying, in addition to the levy, which we still want everyone, vote yes, save the pool, we also want you to pay however many thousands of dollars you're, you feel comfortable giving us, or hundreds, um, for this ice skating event. I, I don't know.
I think that's two different things, just my personal opinion, because if they're, a business is donating to something like this, they're putting their names out there saying, hey, we are sponsoring this, so we get free advertise, or we get the advertising that we paid for by supporting the levy. This is personal, person to person saying, hey, I support the pool. That's two different things right there. One is business, one is personal. The businesses are only gonna profit from this if they donate it, because their name is gonna be put up there.
So I have some questions.
Go ahead.
I just have a lot of questions, actually. So let's see here. You, we, I know we're gonna discuss this in the future about how we're going, how we're going to maintain that. We've talked a little bit about that this afternoon, how we're gonna maintain the pool, who's gonna be still employed, and so on and so forth, because obviously, it takes some supervision for, for running this thing over above these people here. You say that's going to be you, and it's no increased cost.
Right.
So, and, and you still, and you calculate you'd still be on full-time as, from what you told me this afternoon, and so...
In one of the scenarios?
Yes, yep, and so I think that's, that's the key. Um, we have, you have to have somebody supervising this, so, and, and, and you said, yeah, it would make money even if the levy didn't pass, and that would be true if, as you said, that. The other thing is, how, what, have you decided what material you're going to buy? You're gonna try, you're gonna go, yeah, when you go by and ask these people, are you gonna ask them which material they're willing to, to fund? You know, which grade of material?
We're going, I'm sorry, but...
And then, what's the total cost? What are the total costs for the startup? Do you know?
Well, it, it's the, it's the rink material and everything is the thing, is the total cost, plus some, a, a way to do the, um...
Isn't that what this thing is?
Yeah.
Well, it's a...
Well, there's, there are a couple of them there.
We talked about some other things before.
Right.
You wanted to have a radio system, you wanted to have lights there, you wanted to have decorations, and you said, you told me that that would all be included in the upfront cost.
Right, I haven't changed, I haven't changed.
Okay, yeah, so, so it's not just the rink material?
Right, then I need a point, a point of sale, like a, a point of sale, like a tablet or something, like a car.
It's all of that.
Yes.
Yeah, not just the rink material.
Exactly.
Though the rink material certainly determines how much the total cost is gonna be, because it depends upon what quality of the rink material we buy.
Right.
So, do you have a feeling, which one do you want to push for?
I'm, we're, put, are, between, uh, Christine Krib and me, in our discussions, we're looking at the EZ Glide 1350, which is like 35,000. We're gonna go, we're gonna try to raise 38,000 to cover the other things. That's, that's the goal that she and I have...
The EZ Glide 350?
It's the second column. It's the first of the three little columns.
Right, so you're, you're going for least expensive?
It's not the least expensive.
It's not the least expensive, but the other one's a refurb, and there's never a guarantee they have a refurb.
Yeah, right, okay, so you're going, yeah, okay, all right. It's great, so basically, yeah, so there's, I mean, it's, you're, you're talking the 35, 394, plus those other things that I wrote.
Correct.
And any other goodies that you wanna throw in there? Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions, discussion?
I, I think I just wanted to say, Miss On that, I mean, that, that concerns me, just, I, I feel like, I feel like we're looking at what might be a partial list, and I think what concerns me is what's not on the list.
But we had that list before.
Well, if we're voting on it now, we're voting on whether we approve it or not.
But we're, we're voting that he, it has to be 100% of, of every, all the upfront costs. He can't, he can't fudge on it.
If the cost, from what I understand, the cost goes up because of some unforeseen expense, that's something that is gonna be included in the 100%, right?
Yeah, if, if I can't meet 100% of all the initial startup costs, then...
So let's say, say 38,000 is what we estimate. Let's say we underestimated it for about $1,000, so what we really need is...
We're estimating is 40,000 with all those other goodies he's talking about.
40,000, okay, let's go 40,000 right there, but if we don't meet the initial startup cost, we get backed out. That's the 100% of the, the, the starting fee right there. So if it does go up, or if it even goes down, there's no loss to us, because it's gonna be 100% funded. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at right here. So if it goes up, or if it goes down, it's still gonna be 100% funded.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Singleton? I, I think that's a matter of definition of what's upfront versus isn't, and I think that, um, what would make more sense would be sort of a not to exceed, or some number.
Yeah, so some minimum.
Right, or, you know...
Or actually, it's 40,000.
Well, but it's not in motion.
I know.
Okay, I'm just, just to be clear.
I actually was thinking of putting in some sort of...
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, I think, and, uh, what, what I can say from my experience, unfortunately, on this board, is that there have been times when we have lacked clarity, and we have paid for it, and unfortunately...
So there's gonna be crap that's gonna happen, and we're, you know, that's why we're gonna have to count on you to be clear upfront with this.
I don't believe I ever have not.
No, I'm not saying you're not, I think you lean towards wanting this to go through, and that's fine, but it has to be, you have to be understand that we're, the only reason we're, we're approving this is 'cause it's sort of a guaranteed profit.
You think it's...
That was, that was the proposal.
Okay, um, Commissioner Frost, did you wanna make a further modification? Let me read your motion to you. The motion is to carry forward with the Island Ice proposal to make it part of the district, and to proceed as long as 100% of the upfront costs are provided by donations. Do you wanna make a further clarification or modification to that?
Now, let me ask a, a question on that before I modify that. Should we put a minimum or a maximum on it, well, not maximum, but a minimum on it, saying that if it's 100% funded, at least, we're, we're estimating at least 38,000?
Maybe what we need to do is define upfront costs more clearly.
Upfront costs is, basically, everything is needed to set up the rink, including all the costs of, like, the PA systems, skates, the, the ice rink, everything that is needed to lay this down, so all we have to do is man it.
We all know what we, what we want. I mean, trying to word this so that it can't be confused is, we, we need a damn term.
Actually, I fully understand the intent of what you guys are trying to do. I don't, you can sit here and try and wordsmith till the night goes totally dark, but I understand what the intent of what your concerns are, and what it is you expect if you say 100% of all the upfront costs are covered, or we don't go. I understand that. It's not a...
So it's not just the 38,000, it's 38,000 plus whatever those other goodies that we wanna put in there, like the decorations, the lights, the sound system, this, et cetera.
Yes.
I think, I think that motion could just stand as it is, because that's initial startup costs, is everything that is needed to put this together.
Okay. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to carry forward with the Island Ice proposal to make it part of the district, and to proceed as, to proceed as long as 100% of the upfront costs are provided by donations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And Chair votes nay, so we'll do a voice vote. Commissioner Frost?
Aye.
Commissioner Singleton?
Nay.
Commissioner Ford?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holly votes nay, so nays have it.
Executive Director.
Or it doesn't, it doesn't pass.
The Executive Director.
Yeah.
Could another motion be made for us to work this, to make this happen next year, since we're not gonna, you don't, that this year doesn't seem to work? And then, then I, then we can start working on something for next year.
Okay, I move that we, we propose that we would, I don't know, move to, to, to accept this thing in starting next year.
With the same terms and conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, say it again, say your motion.
Next year. I move we, we, uh, we accept, we ask the Chamber of Commerce to allow us to, to...
Partner with the Chamber?
Accept the Island Ice in the, in the same conditions, uh, starting next year.
For, for winter 2018-19?
Yes, yes, assuming the levy passes. If that could, levy doesn't pass.
Okay, what you said was, we ask the Chamber of Commerce to allow us, is, are, do you wanna partner with the Chamber of Commerce? To do the Island Ice?
Same partnership agreement they, they've offered is at this time.
Okay, we, we asked for...
Just ask for, the only partnership agreement is the fundraising.
Yeah, yeah, yes, okay, so, okay, you want me to, you say fundraising, the same fundraising agreement is offered at this time.
Sorry, move we partner with the Chamber of Commerce to conduct, to carry out the Island Ice proposal?
Under the same donation proposal they offered us this year. Just 100% of startup.
For winter 2018-19, under same agreements. Okay, move that we partner with Chamber of Commerce to conduct the Island Ice proposal for the winter of 2018-19, uh, under the same agreement. Do you want, we partner with them, or that we...
No, because he said not partner. We, we, we accept the same, the current proposal to start in 2018. Uh, to, or to explore this, yeah.
Explore, I like explore, 'cause that's still not... Okay, we explore the current...
That would make the same request.
Current Island Ice proposal for the winter of 2018-19, uh, under the same agreement with Chamber of Commerce. Is that what you said? Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, so as we moved, we explore the current proposal for the Island Ice, current, for the Island Ice, um, for the winter of 2018-19, under the same agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. Is there a second?
Second.
You can second, you were...
Oh, I mean, sorry.
I, I will second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Singleton. Discussion?
Um, a couple of things. I think, um, sorry, I, I think we probably need to go back and read the motion again, because it sounded very convoluted, and therefore, I think we need to be a little clear on what it is, what it would be. I'm not asking you to do it right now, because I'm not done yet. Um, I think the other thing is, I think, um, I think a couple of things, uh, one of which would be the, that we determine what that timing would start, um, because I, I actually think we're premature with this motion. I think we, I think, well, first of all, uh, if I backed up for a moment, um, if we, I, I personally would still be open to if they wanted help staffing it, or some partnership buy-in of some sort for this one, and maybe they don't need that, um, but, and so therefore, maybe it's an issue. But something where we could gain some experience and understanding of, of how to run it, I, I think that could benefit us, number one. Number two, um, I think the levy is a great catalyst as to whether we'll, we'll really be interested in this or not. I certainly hope that we pass the levy. Um, and then, but then the other one is the result of how this goes for 2017 will determine whether or not we actually want to carry forward with it. Um, I, I, I believe that, that, because, so it's, you know, it's, it's often said that in things, once, so let me just, once, once is a, once is a, is a, hey, this is a, you know, it's an interesting result, twice is a, now you've, you know, now you've done the concept, you know, a, a second time, that's great, and then it really, it's, you know, the third time tells you that you have something, that you're onto something.
So you're good at wordsmithing. Why don't you make the proposal?
Um, I, I'm, I'm good. I just wanna be sure that once we're voting, regardless of how anyone thinks they're gonna vote, that we're clear on what we're voting on, that's all. So I, I, and on the fly, I am terrible clearly at wordsmithing. Have you seen this? Have you seen this mouth?
So, I mean, you know, you know, I mean, I don't know, we're, we're just trying to get a proposal for next year to say, you know, we, we wanna look at it next year.
And, and so perhaps what might modify that successfully is saying, beginning at this month, that we'll take a look at it, or, you know, something that doesn't, it, it doesn't necessarily need to start today.
Yeah, I guess.
I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think it probably needs to start earlier, and that discussion needs to happen. Um, again, part of it's... Um, again, part of it's going to depend on where we are.
We should wait until after November 7th, I don't know. Okay, I don't know. Yeah, I didn't think we were committing much by making this proposal, to tell you the truth. I thought we were just sort of saying, yeah, we'd be interested next year, you know, assuming all the things that we've already put forward, and assuming that we, the levy passes.
And so not.
Doesn't guarantee we're gonna, we're gonna accept it next year either.
Then, then.
We have a whole new board.
If I, if I may, then does it really even need a motion?
I don't know. Would it be nice for him to be able to go back to that and say that we do have an interest for next year?
Okay.
And also, if we, if we put a, a time on here for, say, either December or January to start looking at it, then that puts it on the agenda and without me having to remember, which is always a bad thing.
Yeah.
Do, would you like, okay, so what I've got is, you moved that we explore the current proposal for Island Ice for the winter of 2018-19, under the same agreement with the Chamber of Commerce. Do you want to put a date on there? Um, so we explore starting December, starting January?
Start exploring the, for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can start exploring, yeah, December this year.
Well, December is still gonna be the old board, January will be.
Okay, yeah, so we should probably wait for a new board.
Okay. So would you like to change that to putting at the end, uh, in January 2018?
Starting January, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, I need a second for the amendment.
Second, oh, I can't.
Feel free to third it.
2018. Second, second, so the amendment.
No seconds.
No, she did.
I did.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? All right, it's moved and seconded that we explore the current Island Ice proposal for the winter of 2018-19, under the same agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, starting in January 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And Chair votes aye, unanimous approval. Thank you. Hillcrest property update.
Yeah, so we, we have that lot out there, about 0.85 acres at Hillcrest, that currently assesses at five grand. Um, what mean, here, so here's what I've discovered, um, on that. It, the last time a perk test was done on it, it was in 1981 and had failed, so nothing's been done to it. Matt and I drove out there and looked at it, and it is totally covered in vegetation, on, on either side of it, and it's a pretty steep, downslope lot, but on either side of it are houses. And the value of those lands, of, of the land for those two, each of them are the same, is $90,000. Our lot's bigger, but the assessor says that doesn't mean we'll get a higher assessed value. Um, what I was able to determine that we can, there is water available to it through the Hillcrest Village Water Company, it's a private water company, and according to the, to the assessor, we can do a perk test, that'll cost us $418, plus whatever the contractor charges, and I think on average perk tests run around a grand or so. Um, if we, if it, if we were to do the perk test and it passes, then we could discuss connecting up to water, and then potentially sell the land at an auction and some, and I don't know what we would ever do with this land.
Yeah, so it failed in 1981, I'm sure things are a lot stricter now than they were in 1981. I don't think it, I think the chances of it, unless there's something in there that somebody can read, who knows about perk tests, and can see, well, wait a second, they made a mistake, because, because I know that there are perk tests, that they're a lot stricter now than they were then, and so our chances of passing are kind of nil.
I, I, I have no, I have no, um, crystal ball on that, so.
What is a perk test? I'm not sure what that is.
It, it determines how the water, how the water settles and basically how the land handles.
Kind of dig a hole, kind of thing.
Like drainage.
Like drainage, it's drainage, really.
See how the water, because it disappears.
It's a percolation.
Kind of.
You have to have it when you're gonna have a septic system. But speaking, um, when I was a child and lived in Scenic Heights subdivision along Scenic Heights Road, with this big field, I mean, it was huge, it was like, now there's 10 houses or 20 houses on it, but, and it was because no one could pass a perk test, and then they just waited for August of a dry summer, did the perk test, passed, built those houses, so.
It's good, it's been a dry summer.
It's been, it's been a dry year. I would say if it's gonna pass a perk test, now is probably the time.
Huh.
Just.
Before it gets a hole too in the ground.
Yeah.
You are, you are cage.
I learned from losing my childhood playground, it was a fabulous place. But anyway, um, does anyone, it's, you know, it's $418, as we said, right?
Plus whatever the contractor that does the work.
Oh, so it might be a thousand dollars.
It could be around a thousand. I don't know that, and I.
What the county here is.
The county, though, gets $418.
Well, I don't, you don't, we don't hear their last statement.
Commissioner Singleton?
Um, I, I, I think the other consideration that this is not, I, I don't recall the last time this was discussed, but I think the other potential option is, I mean, looking at, and I don't know what the grade, what the grade of the land there is, um, I have driven by it, um, when I first figured out where it was, so that was a couple of years ago, but, I mean, the other potential option, um, would be looking at the feasibility of a small neighborhood park of some sort, and, which would be completely within, you know, our bailiwick, and, you know, something that, and that would be difficult, because it's, well, what if we did this? What if people didn't want that? Um, but, but I think it's, personally, I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't, I also will admit that I don't know what requirements for that are as it relates to any of this, um, but I, I do think it's worth exploring, personally.
Yeah, uh, that would just be an expense without any gain.
That is good for perk?
Yeah, how about if we, um, do we want to have a field, a field trip and go and look at it? I think we should.
Can we, can we get, can we get a thing from the county that tells us what the results of that test were, how it was done, and so what's.
In 1981?
Yeah, well, they got to have something.
Actually, they, they have a lot of records.
I can, I can ask them.
Yeah. And then, you know, then if we could just maybe, if we could get somebody with some knowledge who does need perk tests, just to read it and see what they think, before we make the investment.
Yeah.
Well, that they, they could be asked.
Okay, tell you what, um, I would like to put this on, keep this on unfinished business for next time, and so, give, do you have the address again? Do you have it with you? And I know I have it somewhere, but if you would send us the address, and so everyone's assignment before the next regular meeting, drive by and look at it.
Hillcrest, that's over by, uh, right above, uh, Walmart, right?
Yeah, it's kind of over there near the golf course.
Okay.
So.
That's a good view lot, then, right? Is that a view lot?
I don't believe that it is.
It's a what?
View lot, it is a view lot.
Oh, I, I, I don't know, it's so overgrown with vegetation.
Well, you, you guys said you were up there, could you see?
Well, well, no, I didn't, because we, it's thick to look through it.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it faces a street, and then on the backside of it, I don't know what it looks.
It's a town or Balm Baker or something like that.
Oh, it's more of, I think it's more a southwestern look, if I recall.
Yeah, stand in the neighbors' yards and look and see what they can see, but, anyway, so take the, go take a look at it, see what you think about making it a neighborhood park.
Trees, informal, please identify yourself as the co-owner of the property.
Excuse me, ma'am, what are you doing here? Okay, does anyone have any problem with that? All right, forget the address, take a look at it. Um, da-da-da-da, PM lapsel rate increase discussion.
Yeah, well, I was gonna bring this up, but I talked to the director, and I guess the contract is good, is through 2019, so.
18.
18, so, is it, is that through October?
September 30th.
September 30th, so, uh, I'm kind of disappointed that, you know, we haven't, we haven't made more user fee increases in the last two years, but, and, and, and the problem, and, I mean, we based this, apparently you guys base this based on anacortises, but anacortis is only for a one-hour period from noon to 1:00. We basically decided to make that the whole PM, so I'm not quite, I think the PM and AM rate should be the same, but I think we probably just ought to wait till next year to bring that up. So I'm not gonna make a proposal on that.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Singleton?
I would just, um, if, if I could, just to, Commissioner Ford, I, I think we will potentially need to be, I, I mean, from my perspective, we will potentially be in a position where we calculate what we think that the prices would be, if we don't pass the levy versus what, what we do, so I would, I would hate for us to address it and then readdress it, and, and so I think, I mean, I.
I know that there's people, I've talked to people who've come here from South of Dalville, typically because we're so much cheaper rather than going to their own pool, because they, they're, like I said, the single admission rate here I was looking at was seven bucks.
Ooh, they did raise their price.
Combo pool for pool and fitness class, nine dollars. The noon, noon swim is 425. That's noon, that's basically a one-hour period. The punch, in any, they're like their punch passes are more, and actually, it seems like they only have like a senior, they only have like, for seniors, they don't seem to have a punch pass for anybody else. So, you know, we're, we're so much cheaper than other districts that, kind of, because we haven't made, like, like I, like we both agreed on, we haven't made incremental increases over since 1985. So, you know, the, the current levy covers 61% this year, probably 65% of the total budget, and whereas in the, in 1985 it was 30%. So, you know, that's where the taxpayers get aggravated, is this steady creep of what's being covered by the levy funds versus what the user pays. I think the, the understanding was the user were gonna pay, it's gonna be about a 50/50 thing, and it's not anywhere near that. I'm done.
Thank you. And yes, you're right, we need to increase rates again. All right, new business, noted, oh, okay, so our budget meeting that we just had, a bunch of people did not get notified of when it was going to be via their normal channel, so I wanted to talk about, for each of us, each of the commissioners, how, how do you need to be notified of special meeting times? Because I want to make sure that we don't have anybody not notified.
So people, some people are not, not everybody's looking on the standard web, that our, our, whatever you call our website for the pool.
You mean the O-Cover Pool, at O-Cover Pool, that one? What are you?
No, no, our, our, um.
The Outlook.
Logins, the login website.
The Outlook email.
Outlook, yes, yes, the login, right. So some, some people apparently are not using that.
I never look at that, but I'm the chair, so I always, I, I always know when the meetings are because I'm the one who usually sets them.
So, so you basically, so what you're saying is some people haven't sent them personally?
Yes, they, using their personal email accounts.
Well, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So part of our responsibility is notification that goes to, one, legally to the paper and to, to the news media, and the other one is we have traditionally sent it to a public distribution list, and, um, I can't remember whether it was 2014 or 2015, but we did have an issue, uh, it may have even been more than once, when we did not send the necessary notifications nor post them on the, um, website, and so I will, I will cop to the fact that I wait for the public one, because, um, from my perspective, if there isn't one, then it's not a valid meeting. Um, I realize that there can be nuances there, but in, in the cases that I have experienced in the past, they were not in fact valid meetings, and we did not in fact hold those meetings.
We had to reschedule.
But part of that was understanding that we have not made the necessary notifications.
And that was in 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, it was a nightmare. Um, so.
Why, we have a separate login kind of website then? Okay, anyway, I want to put on this other public website so I can, I don't have.
It's a, it's a distribution list.
You were probably on it before, I would think.
No.
Oh, really?
Okay, so you would like your personal, to go to your personal email, what's your email address?
I don't have to bother looking into login, because.
Do the Outlook one, right?
Doesn't that make your email sus- sus- susceptible to an audit for your personal email vice your official email as a commissioner?
Does it really?
Yes, it does.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I, I thought all of our personal emails were anyway.
No, they're not, because they're personal emails. It hasn't do anything with the, what we do if we send it through our personal email, yes, that is accessible, but if we use official email, that is right there, they cannot go through our personal email, seeing if we did conduct the business through our personal.
I'll wait and start logging soon.
I think that's a legal thing that, uh, Executive Director probably should look into instead of saying, hey, we're gonna send it to your personal email vice.
As a member of the public, that's how I requested it, as other people, I've been on that list since 2013, I believe, perhaps 2014, but I've been on that list.
But that's an official email or official document, right? Do you want your personal?
Sure, it's, it's one, it's a one-way communication.
Okay, but somebody wants to, some of you want to put it to your personal email, which...
It's a one-way communication, unless I respond. It's, it's a push, it's, it's a push, they're all a push.
I'd like to continue with the login.
Okay, so you're okay, you want to continue, it, the, I asked the Executive Director, and he said he, he thinks all the people that didn't get it were all a Gmail account, and he, so he thinks it had something to do with the, tell me what that thing was called?
Signal pop? The incoming pop server, probably crapped it, like packets get lost sometimes, everything you send, you'll lose something in it over the internet, everything. Just, how, it could be tiny, it could be something, but you'll lose something. My guess, since the, and I called and verified with someone else who's on the list, that is Gmail as well, since the two that I knew of didn't get it were Gmail accounts, this person's email was Gmail, and this person did say, I did not get that email either, so all I can think of is that the incoming pop server crapped them on this one instance, and, and they didn't go to who they were supposed to go to.
Okay, so if nobody else has any issue with how you're getting stuff, then moving on. Um, state auditor proposal.
I got an email from the team leader up in Bellingham that covers us, and it was just a query, asking if we would consider doing our next scheduled audit next year in 2018, uh, instead of 2019. What's that?
We just had it this year, I know, it was their backup.
It covered through 2015, and this would be 2016 and 17.
Tell them no, uh, sorry, that would be my guess, because if the levy doesn't pass, we don't have the money to pay for it.
Well, that, that's, well, potentially, you're, you're absolutely right. What, what they would give us, what they're trying to do is realign their smaller districts like us, and, and so that's not all jammed into one year for them, and, uh, we would get a reduced rate, so instead of around eight, nine thousand, it would be around, her estimate was 5,700, but it could be plus or minus that a little bit.
Well, it was only 6773 this year.
No, it was about seven something.
No, I looked on budget, I looked on the P and L, it said 6773, 6,773.
And that, Captain, because, uh, we drove everything up there.
Yeah, right, okay, yeah, yeah, that would be my point, is that 6,773, so I, my, my question was gonna be, how much savings? The audit was 6,773 this year, plus our, our preparation labor expenses, copy machine costs and travel expenses to and from Bellingham, so I would assume we would need to, we'd need to have at least a $2,500 off of that 6773.
I think we paid some money in 2016, seems to me that we did, because I was real surprised that it was like, there were a couple thousand that we paid, and I thought we paid in 2016, now it's. You sure?
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall anything in 2016. We, they were supposed to start the audit in October, but didn't get to it until the end of December, so we didn't get billed until 2017.
For us to break even, break even, is saving, is, again, I'm thinking we have to save $2,500 off of that 67.
Well, and remember, the baseline for the, for the audit that we just did, we figured, we calculated our estimated $9,000.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, though, I'm basing it on the same thing we did this year, where we're going to try and save money by preparing all the stuff and taking it up there, so.
It's just a request they, they asked us to look into.
But they're just giving us kind of a vague, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll cut, but they're not telling us exactly how much, and it's off of, and they're using that $8,000 one rather than this, this 6,773, and then, because they want to subtract the same. And then, because they want to subtract the same amount, oh, $6,773, that sounds reasonable, that they're taking off of the $8,000.
Yeah, they cannot, they can't tell us how much exactly an audit's going to cost, because there's labor and all sorts of stuff. We can help them by doing stuff, but they can't, they can give us an estimate, and it's...
They're asking us to do something, I think they need to make a commitment.
This is what they want, what they asked if we would do, so if you guys don't...
If we're around, for us gambling, they need to tell us, make it, sweeten the pot.
Well, they're a government agency, so we're going to sweeten the pot.
Okay.
Oh, is that, in what way are you suggesting, sorry?
Because giving us, telling us how much they're going to, the savings are going to be, not sort of say, well, you get a savings, but it's a guess of it. And trust us.
Okay, so do we want to just leave it up to the director to make a decision, does somebody want to make a motion so that we tell them what we wanted them to do? Just leave it?
Sounds like you guys aren't for it, so I'll just decline the offer.
Okay. Only because our financial, you know, house is not in order and have no idea what it's going to look like next year.
I agree.
So, you know, if the levy passes, then we'd be like, okay, sure, save us money. But, so then...
Well, if this really saves money.
Yeah, and it's like saving us a great deal, so...
Madam Chair, well, is that an option? I mean, that, sorry if I missed something, because I feel like, is that an option to say, oh gee, well now we've, now we've passed the levy, should that happen, and then say, well, you know, we're still interested?
I can ask him that question.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I...
And if that's, if that's the case, then conditionally, I would say, yes, we'll do it if we pass the levy. It's still a year out, they can't...
I mean, the fact, sorry, but the fact is that some, I mean, there will be a charge, and there will be a cost, under the assumption, which I think we all support, that the district still exists. And I'm not trying to be fatalistic or anything, I don't mean it that way, but this will happen at some point in time, so there will be a cost. And so kind of, I mean, to me, it's kind of a, you know, if you think it's a good deal, as someone who experienced it, as someone, you know, if you think it's the right thing for the district to do, I trust you with that decision. So, and...
Is it going to be a real savings?
Well, I'm going to have to make the decision, they don't, it's government to government, they don't jockey and war straight. It's, they're not, it's not a corporation.
If we're trying to make a decision, we're just trying to, oh yeah, go ahead, do whatever you want to do, and we'll pay you, yeah, oh well. Do our work, our service do.
But if I, I mean, if I understand how, I mean, whether it's the election or whether it's the audit, I mean, that is actually what happens, is, okay, so, you know, it's the welcome to this, and when we send the bill, I'm certain we could question it, but I don't think there's a lot of leeway there. And, you know, and we had the situation a couple of years ago where we had a surprise bill...
Oh, God.
Because, because of the way that the state was working, and, you know, and CAS ended up taking care of that, and, or, no, that's the county one, but that was, yeah, that was a different one, so it's happened, it's happened more than once, and part of it is, unfortunately, part of our potential response was not, eh, no thanks. Like, oh, that's really cute, but we say no. It was something we didn't have, we don't have a choice. So, I mean, if it seems like something that we, that is good for the district, you know, I mean, I think through the process and the cost, and if we think that it's a good thing, I mean, you know, I would support it, I just would want to, you know, be sure that we, yeah, I would, I would put it conditional on the levy personally.
I'll talk to her about that.
If you ever worked for the government, you know the government's always going to get your money. They're never going to give you money voluntarily, they're always going to get the money for you.
No good deal.
Might as well just say yes conditionally.
God, we're all skeptics.
Okay, next, fall winter pool schedule, does everyone get this nice, oh, I'm the old, everyone got it, okay, long colorful one. What is special programs? I thought we got rid of those.
No.
Because I remember they used to be, it used to be all blocked off, this time it's all blocked off for special programs, and nothing ever happened except we were paying lifeguards for doing nothing.
Yeah.
It was so irritating.
Yes.
When were we paying lifeguards for doing nothing?
When I first got on the board.
Okay, not during my watch.
No, no.
Okay, special programs are, this right here is the, our swim school from Oak Harbor Elementary, or the, why can't I get the name out, Clover Valley, the Home Connections.
Oh, okay.
This is what that is.
I assume if there's no special, special programs, it's just going to be lap swim.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if there was, if that wasn't in there, then it would just extend lap swim for that period if they're not in there.
So, I mean, I don't see, I don't see it's where it's the same thing. The other time was complete shutdown.
Oh, it was, other than we were paying a lifeguard.
Yeah, 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 right. So this is different, I think.
So, well, you guys look at it, I'll just give you my little two-minute thing on this.
Okay.
This will go into effect September 7. This is pretty much last fall winter's schedule. The major changes are the try, we're going to try this opening at 5:00 in the morning, because we had about, almost two dozen people indicate interest. Now, does that mean two dozen people are going to show up? I don't know, but, so we're going to, we're going to try that. And with the swim team no longer being a district program, some of their times had to move, they had, we had to move their times around, and they came with their request for what they wanted. And Oak Harbor, we...
Some kids get up at 5:00 in the morning, earlier swimmer you do.
They do, wow. I did many years of it with my son.
On me.
Didn't like it any one of those days. So we shifted the high school to four to 5:30, because that helps them with their ability to have their coach, otherwise they wouldn't have had coaches this year that could have done it. So they're in there from 4:00 to 5:30, but they don't have any morning time anymore. But they're still getting the time they had.
Do we have a contract with NWA?
Almost.
Okay.
Almost.
And these are the hours that they, that they want and are going to pay?
Well, they want, they want it different, this is what I was able to accommodate for them. So, but they wanted, it pretty much, what they ended up having to do, instead of where they were pretty horizontal across this spreadsheet, they ended up having to go more vertical to get what they wanted in there, but the, you know, the morning time would be there, and then the afternoon time will work on, it'll work for them right now.
I would like to see the financials for the Oak Harbor School District and NWA and what they're paying for the lane time.
The Oak Harbor's, well, for the, for the NWA, it's $5 an hour, because that's what the calculation comes to after you guys did your, that meeting back in May, whenever you determined what the, what goes into levy and what goes into programs. So whenever you take all that and do it, it comes to $5 an hour, $5 a lane hour. The high school has, their contract is based on a graduating rate increase over the next, well, now three more years to go.
What are the current plan for lane hour, do you know? Who?
The Clover High School. Oh, I don't know, I'd have to go take that money and divide it by their, their stuff, so, no, I don't know what they're paying. I know that it, this year it jumps to like $7,100, and the next year it goes to like $10,000, and then the, on year four, it's up around $13,500.
There's enough to do, we can just, what is it, $16,000, $17,300, so it's an hour and a half times five.
Three lanes.
Yeah, for three lanes, okay, the lane hours. And that, and that, but that's not all year round, it's only for...
It's about six months, plus, plus whatever home meets, they have scheduled.
Okay. So plus, that's right, that includes the shutdown for, for home meets?
Yeah, it closes.
Complete shutdown for home meets.
Does the pool shut down for home meets? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does it seem like they got, seem like they're going to serve? Okay, thanks. So it does include that, all right, see ya.
Any other questions, comments on the fall/winter pool schedule? All right, winter closures.
So you should have another spreadsheet in there, which is from last year, because we, we did the closure last year, but I have no way of knowing if it actually saved all that money, I'm going to assume it did. But our recommendation, assuming we pass the levy, which is what we all hope for, is that we do the same closure schedule, the day before Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve and Christmas, New Year's Eve and New Year's. The only thing that it, well, actually, no matter for Island Ice now for this year, but yeah, so, that's just what we're, again, based on last year's projection, which looked back the previous three years, it potentially saves us about $2,800 in labor, so...
Right. The top one doesn't, at least the total cost, they don't drive, 587, 376, but it's still down the bottom, it comes up 3588, and it's, which is the same as you got, so I'm not quite sure how you, you see what I'm saying? Look at the page, I mean, I think it's, I don't know what you did there. If you look at the total cost of the top breath on the very end, it says 587, so for, so for 23 November was 587, for 25 November was $1,050, whereas for 23, and the bottom one, for 23 November is 376, and 25 is 766. But then you added them all up, and you got 3588 for both of them, which obviously doesn't work for the second breath. But, so anyway, so I think you're correct, I just think you must have had a little bit of typo there.
Well, now, yeah, might be, without going, all I did was pull this out and print more copies, which is what I did last year.
So, it was a little confusing when I first saw it, but I said, well, I guess 3588 is really what we're working with. Okay.
All right, staff reports. Anyone have questions on staff reports?
So we don't have to approve this, huh?
No.
I guess, thanks.
If you have an issue with it, you should speak up, but...
Yeah, no, no, I don't, yeah, I did have this. I think I already discussed that.
I have a question. Explain this, this was from Jessica at American Red Cross. This also reintegrated the new instructor website used by American Red Cross instructors to process classes. There's something in there that's wrong, and I didn't understand what it was meant to be saying. It's her second paragraph in paragraph two, or...
Oh, is it under American Red Cross?
Yeah, the last sentence makes no sense, I don't know what she's trying to say.
I think the Red Cross changed their, the way they do it, or their interface that It's, it's like a portal that the instructor, that like Jessica or instructors go to when they enter their kids that do their, pass the classes, or Jessica for people who pass lifeguard classes and stuff like that.
So, this class that Erica was there, which is cool?
Yeah.
They, the lifeguard trainees actually went onto this website and learned how to use it?
Yes.
Okay.
NQ, what's that? NQ, all the online.
So that's a question. Nice question.
Yeah.
So under, yeah, so, the pirate swim, I got me to think, apparently that got canceled?
It's going to be integrated into the haunted swamp now.
Yeah, but it's canceled for this area.
Yes.
Why was that?
The mermaids weren't available.
It's interesting, they were swimming the other day.
Yeah, something came up, so...
Okay, and then, let's see, so the roof, we talked about this, so, you know, that bubble that was up there with the water underneath, that was supposed to be corrected during the warm dry spell, we certainly had a lot, we're coming near to the end of our warm dry spell, it's like the thing, so this stuff needs to sort of get done. And then same thing with the putting on of the 10 gallons or 12 gallons of sealing, that needs to get done in the next couple of weeks now.
If it doesn't, if he doesn't go up tomorrow, then he'll be doing it probably Monday.
Okay, and then the, then the bubble...
Well, that's that roofing company, he's got them coming back to look at it, but the bubble's gone, all the water's gone.
They sucked it out?
Well, no, it evaporated or went away, it's gone. It didn't go down, because there's no leak under, but it went somewhere, but it's gone. But they're coming, I can't remember their name now, but that roofing company that came out and looked at it for is coming out now.
And can guarantee us that this bubble, the water's not going to come back.
Well, I wish I remembered, the flash, I'm going to call it flashing, I know that's not the right name, the water was in between two layers of it, that's why we weren't seeing it come through.
I was just kind of guessing how it could evaporate, because we've had like, tar, we had the tar paper on top of it or something, anyway.
It got really hot.
Okay. So I would make this main stand roll, let's see, so it's, I think we should probably, let's see here, or look, I would, first of all, the, for the Schulten Roofing, it said the quote for $215,000. If you want, were we concerned sort of putting that in the 2019 budget if the levy passes?
Well, I mean, it'd have to...
I know, it's going to be next year, but, I mean...
It, to get that, to where we can do that, it's probably two to three years easily, yeah, but, and the price will probably go up some, but, and this will have to be set out as a bid.
I would think it could be done in 2019, but anyway, I'm not going to be able to. So the main stand roll, let's see, planned to replace in 2017, well, we don't have much left 2017, are we still planning on building it in 2017?
No, we talked about this before, I don't intend to touch it unless it fails now.
Okay, so we're just going to wait till it fails?
Yeah.
Will we have to shut down if it fails?
No, we can go 48 hours, we'll have, we can have, the people say we can have one here in '24.
Okay.
If we go 48 hours hand coronating the pool.
Okay, all right, okay. And the UV system, and probably plan for that in two or three years also, or...
If, if that's what we want to do, right now I don't have any...
And how about the submerged lights, we're planning on closing in 2018, I assume?
Yes.
So we can get those done then?
Yes, next summer.
All right, maybe we should put some of that, he can have that added in there, we plan to close 2018, and the lights can be done then, and sort of estimate when some of these things can be done. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, sure.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on the staff reports? I think I did one. And the employee of the month was Michelle Robinson, who, what did she do before she went to the client service specialist?
She duels.
Is she a lifeguard?
She's a lifeguard, swim instructor, and a, and a client service specialist, home on home from first year of college.
So apparently she got trained to do the client service specialist and has been doing a very good job.
Yep.
Thanks, Michelle, for all your hard work.
I can verify, she does a good job, because I've seen, she anticipates things, I've noticed, for example, I no longer have to sort of, you know, she sees me coming, she puts up a bar down the end, and when it gets time to sort of, you know, to have to take down some lane line, she's always the first one to sort of get up there and sort of get in the roller.
Thank you.
And as I pointed out, she seems to be one of the few who's not afraid to sort of tell people who come in dry, that there's a shower over there that they need, before they get in the pool.
Good for Michelle, yay, doing her job for not eating up the chlorine. Okay, good job. Public comments, no, none needed. Final word comments, anyone have something they would like to say? No? Okay. Next meeting is Thursday, September 28 at 6:30 PM. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
It's been moved in second, and we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Chair Reese, unanimous, thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 8:03 PM. Please.
So, are you here just to get practice for you when you...
Yeah, I get practice, I did practice. Kind of like I miss.
Did you have syphilis, is that what you, did you just say you have syphilis?
No, I miss.
Damn, you did.
The uncurable, the only treble, yes.